We will go ahead and begin the meeting with the roll call. Mr. Curtis, if you would call roll, please.
Mr. Daniel?
Aye.
Mr. Elrod?
Aye.
Mr. Fan?
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Chairman Sanders?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, do you have five here or none? Mr. Daniel is by remote control tonight.
All right. So with that, we do have a forum, and at this time, we will turn it over to Mr. Curtis for our presentation of Employee of Month.
Mr. Chairman, my pleasure to do so tonight. I'll do part of that from back here if you don't mind. We'll move over to the crowd here in just a minute. Ms. Corstefus, School Counselor for Woodland School and Short Mountain School, has been named as Employee of the Month for February 2019 at Canton County Schools. At the February Meeting of the Canton County Board of Education tonight, we're going to recognize and present Cory's certificate from each of us. Woodland School Principal Angela Cossey is out of the state tonight, but she wanted me to talk about Mr. Cory for a minute and tell me how Mr. Cory has been an outstanding Guidance Counselor for Woodland School. And Ms. Angela praises Mr. Cory on and on and on. But I want to tell you something about Cory the other day that I saw Cory in action. I'll read from what Ms. Bonnie Patterson and Ms. Tisha Cook actually said about what she saw the other day at Woodland School. When there's Johnny and Officer Tommy were simultaneously called to the office in Woodland, I knew neither of them were there, and I headed down to see if I could be of any help. As I passed the side door, I noticed a car on its top. As Heather Parker and I ran out to see if we could help, besides, a couple of women frankly were trying to figure out how to get the trapped passenger out of the car. Our very own, Mr. Cory Steffes, was lying in glass, bleeding from his arm, and reaching into a very bloody car to try and help get the passengers loose and extracted from the car. He also ran back into the school to gather needed information about the student who was in the wreck and continued to help. He even wondered if he should ride with the student to the hospital. He then went immediately back into the school, cleaned blood from his hands and his arms, took off his dirty sweater, and went right to counseling kids who happened to be witnesses to the accident. And these kids were very shaken up. Needless to say, Mr. Cory is truly a top-notch teacher and counselor. He cares so much about the kids, and our school and students are so lucky to have him. He wouldn't want to be recognized or praised, but he deserves it. So if you need an employee to brag on your upcoming wonderful Wednesday, give this to Ms. Patterson. He's your man. Short Mountain Principal Dean of Principals, Mr. Robert Tits, which fits her tonight, is home for Valentine's Day. Also stated regarding our employer, or his employee, our Guidance Counselor, Mr. Cory Steffes, is such a great asset at Short Mountain School. He is loved, admired, and respected by all. Students are drawn to him like a magnet because he has such wonderful relationship with them. They know that they can confide in him and trust that he will do his best to help them with whatever situation they have with their minds. He has such a warm, caring attitude toward the students. He is a counselor and a teacher. He goes to classrooms and presents lessons that are so appropriate and needed in the lives of students. He builds character. He teaches students how to work with each other and care for one another. Mr. Cory is our 504 Coordinator. He serves as a link between parents whose children may have special needs and may require special services with their staff. He brings them together to discuss and formulate plans best with the child. He also serves as a link between the eighth grade students and the high school. He advises the eighth grade on a proper course of study as they prepare to enter high school. Our student would be a great disadvantage without the expertise of Mr. Cory. If you would come up, I hate to interrupt your Valentine's plans. I appreciate Ms. Bonnie Patterson getting that together tonight. And in doing so, if I can get somebody to take any picture for us, Ms. Bonnie, you want to do that? I'll get one from both sides here or so. Okay, we'll get one over there for Chris. And yeah, I want your family, absolutely, we'll get your family, huh? Now, do not make any posts on my phone, please. Any mails on my phone forever. So absolutely, we'll have it.
I'll put that on my Facebook, but I don't do it.
That's the school file anyway. Now, I want to get, well, I know they want to get some names, Cory, so when I ask you to send it in, do that tomorrow.
Everybody be happy. Everybody smile. Smile, baby. Okay, now we got one more.
Yeah, definitely one more for others, Chris. You're here.
You're here?
Yep. Everybody, let's give Mr. Cory a round of applause.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Congratulations to you, Mr. Cory. We appreciate all that you do and keep up the good work of our statements. Okay, in calling the meeting to order, we will be discussing agenda items only. If you have something you wish to speak to board member, please see us after the meeting, and we will address your concerns at that time. Any comments or expressions made by the individual do represent the opinions of the individual and not the Canton County Board of Education as one entity. If anyone would like to record this meeting, I believe you may have already done so, but please notify us at this time. Bring your devices to the front for better recording quality. So with that, we will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. We do have some revisions. Mr. Curtis did text and email about that. For just a second, Mr. Curtis, if you want to clarify what the two revisions are before we make that motion.
Mr. Chairman, this is when we did talk about, one of these, we did talk about at the Board Workshop number seven, approve the contract with Genesis Academy. And Ms. Bonnie brought me one where we have to have this sent in. Ms. Bonnie, by the 28th, I'm assuming, and so I knew it would not be by the 28th, she got it today. And so yesterday, and she's been diligently working on that grant, you have it in your packet, and that's to approve the application for 2019 Access to Health Through Healthy Active Built Environments Grant. And she'd like to address the board at number eight for watching through this.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Do we have a motion to approve the revised agenda? Motion's been made, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, and second, call roll, please.
Motion made by Mr. Turner, signed by Mr. Elrod, to approve the revised agenda inserting items number seven and number eight. Mr. Daniel?
Aye.
Mr. Elrod?
Aye.
Mr. Fan?
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Chairman Sanders?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, five ayes, no nays?
Motion carried. Item number two is our consent agenda. We have items A and B. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion approved.
Motion's been made, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, and second, call roll, please.
Motion made by Mr. Turner, signed by Mr. Fan, to approve the consent agenda. A, approve the minutes of the January 10, 2019 meeting of the Board. B, approve rest strips number 3487, 3490, and 3502. Mr. Daniel?
Aye.
Mr. Elrod?
Aye.
Mr. Fan?
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Chairman Sanders?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, five ayes, no nays?
Motion carried. Okay, item number three, Mr. Jeremy Gunner talked to us at the workshop on Tuesday night concerning establishing a fishing team at the Canton County High School. I don't have any questions, but I know some of you weren't able to be there, so we'll take just a minute and open the floor if there's any questions, or if Mr. Gunner, you have anything additional.
Mr. Chairman, I believe he has the individual with him tonight. Chairman, if you will introduce him if that's a possible.
Yeah, Glenn Fan, he's the other coach, for the high school fishing team.
Again, I just want to commend you, Jeremy, and Glenn, on getting all this together, doing this for our kids. Anytime we can offer anything in addition to what we already have, it's a great idea. And it was educating for me to know there's a lot more to it than just sitting out on the boat, pleasure time. So I think it's great, and you know, can't wait to hear the results of it. So with that, I'll make a motion that we approve the establishment of a fishing team according to the guidelines Mr. Gunner presented.
Second.
Motion's been made, and second, call roll, please.
Motion made by Mr. Sanders, signed by Mr. Elrod, to sanction the Canton County High School Fishing Team affiliated with Bass Nation and Bass Masters High School program, and to appoint Mr. Jeremy Gunner and Mr. Glenn Fan as coaches. Mr. Daniel?
Aye.
Mr. Elrod?
Aye.
Mr. Fan?
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Chairman Sanders?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, five ayes, no nays?
Motion carried.
Look forward to seeing some trophies in the trophy case. Mr. Fan?
Third.
Okay, item number four, Mr. Kelly did not attend the workshop, and is not in attendance tonight. So unless a board member would like to suggest other action, we will move on to item number five. Okay, we will move on to item number five, and that is to consider concrete pad bid for the baseball facility. We saw those in our workshop and talked about those. If you will recall, we did approve in a previous meeting to bid these out, and those bids were in and open, so at this time, we'll open the floor. Mr. Curtis, do we have any comments?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, I moved to adopt. You see the lowest bid there, Summit Concrete for $14,100 for the concrete pad of the Canton County High School Baseball Facility. Summit's working with us, giving us a deep discount. I think most members will look at that and see that in their bid. Mr. Coach Jones, do you have anything to comment on the ad about the concrete bid?
Another we discussed, the 14-1 is the bid, and this is totally up to you guys, but we're looking to expand this dugout area, and if we can have the whole 14-4, that's okay if not, we'll hold out our, for that extra amount, they seem to be able to either give it to us for free, or give me 5,000, 500, 2,000. We would go with 3,000.
You bought it for the 14-4, yes, Mr. Fan? You move? All right, motion's been made, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, and second, call roll, please.
Motion made by Mr. Elrod, signed by Mr. Fan, to approve the contract, I'm sorry, I'm a bit distracted here, to approve the bid of Summit Concrete LLC for $14,100 for the concrete pad of the Canton County High School Baseball Facility. If I can, I'm assuming the board, $14,400. To approve the Summit Concrete bid of $14,100 for the concrete pad of the Canton County High School Baseball Facility. Mr. Daniel?
Aye.
Mr. Elrod?
Aye.
Mr. Fan?
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Chairman Sanders?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, five ayes, no nays?
Motion carried. Item number six, our agenda is to approve a construction bid for the baseball facility. We did receive three bids, and we reviewed those along with the specs at our workshop on Tuesday night. I believe the recommendation was from Dave Coe Construction, also known as Russell Davenport. So at this time, if anybody has any additional information, we'll entertain that or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, Coach Jones is here, as well as Mr. Davenport. Kyle can tell you a whole lot more about that, and Russell can too, in regard to this bid is a, I think, a great bid for the finished interior. Mr. Coach Jones, you might want to make a comment about that, sir.
The bid is technically more expensive, but I brought our funds from the facility building. We have plant funds to be finished as well. It does finish the inside framing and finish the inside ceiling, which would be drastically more than what the other bids were just on the shell, the outer shell, which we would still have to frame up inside stuff, handouts, everything. So that has to make any difference.
Motion's been made to approve, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Motion's been made, and second, call roll, please.
Motion made by Mr. Elrod, signed by Mr. Turner, to approve the bid of Dave Coe Construction of $36,494.07 to construct the Canton County High School Baseball Facility as detailed in said bid. Mr. Daniel?
Aye.
Mr. Elrod?
Aye.
Mr. Fan?
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Chairman Sanders?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, five ayes, no nays?
Motion carried. Item number seven is to approve the contract with Genesis Academy. Ms. Audrey James spoke to us the other night, gave us some more details of the situation that are somewhat private due to regulations. But for those of you that play with an absence or if you have any questions, since this has been made, we'll entertain that. Mr. Curtis, do we have anything additional?
Mr. Chairman, I put on each of your areas, Mr. Daniel, I sent you one of the email also. So you've received copies of the signed contract by, or attorney, Mr. Mike Jennings, who did review the contract, and he had one little thing, well, one thing he wanted to change that he possibly could, and the company agreed to change that, so that has been reflected in paragraph number 13. And so I would recommend this contract for the special fishery suit.
Just to clarify, Mr. Curtis, because I'm glad you brought it up, I did want to mention, but I know we were definitely under some time constraints, and I saw Mr. Jennings make reference to that, but I'm looking here really quick. 13, so, okay, so where do we get that changed?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I recommend approval.
Motion's been made, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Motion's been made, second, call roll, please.
Motion made by Mr. Elrod, signed by Mr. Turner, to approve a contract with Genesis Slam Rutherford Academy. Mr. Daniel?
Has this been changed to Canton County, right?
Yes, sir, paragraph number 13, yes, sir.
Okay, aye.
Mr. Elrod?
Aye.
Mr. Fan?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Chairman Sanders?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, five ayes, no nays?
Motion carried. Item eight on our agenda is to approve the application of 2019 Access to Health Through Healthy Active Built Environments Grant. Mr. Patterson?
I received notification yesterday of a $20,000 grant to build, it has to be a built environment grant, so we have to improve our community's access to physical activity. We had a discussion about wanting to do another project, there'll be more money coming, but within the time constraints, I had to write this very quickly. And so we met, we got together a committee from our Health and Tennessee Committee and with school administration at the high school, because we have walking tracks now at every school except the high school. And if you know the high school area, this particular grant has to combine access to the community, it has to be joint agreement use, it cannot be fenced in, so that other members of the community can come and use this after school hours. So anyway, we decided to do a walking track at the high school. It would be located on the other side of the hill house next to the road. We know that that's a parking area six times a year for five home football games and graduation, but we're working details out for that, so that we will not damage the surface during parking of those events. But with your approval, that's what we would like to do. We will work on doing some family engagement nights, also trying to get more physical activity during the day for students. We're going to have to have measures. We're going to use VMIs and blood pressures of our freshman class because they all have wellness. We already do that once a year, so we're going to pre-test in the fall, and we'll post-test in the spring. And we also are going to count labs in participants, because we have to show ease, and so we're using our students for that. You know that the community walks vapor daily, and there's not safe a place to walk there. They walk the street, and our students' condition over there in the street. So now we hope that we'll at least have a track there so that we can get some use there. And Mr. Daniel, I added Hudson Cup as a community sponsor, I hope that's okay, as just being, since you already have sides, now they're on football field.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Patterson, I have one quick question. There's a section in here that talks about maintenance and funding we provide by the Hospital and Board of Education. Do we know what that cost looks like, or is it?
That would just be upkeep around, like mowing, that type of thing?
Is it gravel?
No, it's pavement. It's not concrete, it's asphalt.
Asphalt, right.
Just like the one we have at Eastside, just like the one we have at Woodland. We'll have to bid it out. Normally, we have one particular company that usually wins those bids, so we, I know that I've worked on Short Mountains, Westides, Woodlands, Mubia Grammers, and out of the high school. So I have five tracks. So kind of know the logistics of what it's going to look like.
And I'm sorry if I missed this in the beginning, what's the amount of the grant?
$20,000. This is the first time we've had a grant this large that would cover the whole project.
Do you think there will be some access there?
We, if there is, we want to build a ramp for wheelchair access, and we're going to work with the construction class to build some benches for if there's any elderly folks that come and walk, if they need to rest, we'll have some benches there. So also for family, we have to have a family engagement night or an activity as part of the grant, so we'll use those folks for that as well.
Sounds good.
Motion's to approve.
Motion's been made, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Motion's been made, and second, call roll, please.
Motion made by Mr. Fan, signed by Mr. Turner, to approve the application for a $20,000 grant from Tennessee Department of Health, Access to Healthy Health Through Healthy Active Built Environments Grant Program. Mr. Daniel?
Aye.
Mr. Elrod?
Aye.
Mr. Fan?
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Chairman Sanders?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, five ayes, no nays?
Thank you.
Motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Patterson. Item number nine on our agenda is our monthly review of our board policy. This month is the month that we review the beginning of Section 5, which deals with personnel, and that's Section 5.101 through 5.310. Mr. Curtis talked to us briefly. Mr. Curtis, anything in addition?
Mr. Chairman, if you look at, I put a packet in your packet, the summary of Section 5 for your use, and these policies are dealing with employment practices, separation practices, and employee leave, is what these deal with. I will bring them back to the board at a later time. I mean, our personnel have looked at that too, and there's a couple of things that we need to look at and probably change, and I'll be bringing that back to you. And that's part of this review, because not only do we ask you to review this, I asked my principals to review it, supervisors to review it, and all of us taking a look at it, as well as the board. And so I think these reviews are very, very good use of our time to see if there are things that do need to be changed, because over the years, things change. And that's one of these I will look at, because it does need to be changed, because the state law has changed, so we'll get TSBA to help us rewrite that and get that completed. I'll be bringing that back to you later.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Make a motion to approve the review of these policies. Do we have a motion's been made, and second, call roll, please.
I have a second. Motion made by Chairman Sanders, signed by Mr. Elrod. School Board Personnel Policies Part 1, 5.101 to 5.310 were reviewed. Motion to approve the review. Mr. Daniel?
Aye.
Mr. Elrod?
Aye.
Mr. Fan?
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Chairman Sanders?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, five ayes, no nays?
Motion carried. Okay, item 10 was the safety report, and we covered that at the workshop. Just again, safety is continuing to move in a forward direction, and we would like to see that continue. Item 11, director's comments. So, Mr. Curtis, we'll turn it over to you at this time.
On behalf of Valentine's Day, and it's supposed to be short, but sweet, I would like to thank those individuals for coming tonight, particularly Coach Jones, bringing his bride. So thanks for a great Valentine, we hope it's romantic enough. But I appreciate every one of you, board members and the audience, for being here tonight on Valentine's Day. I just have a couple of comments. One comment is, you have the financial statement in your packets to review, we're doing better, but again, budget meetings have started, and we have a budget meeting on February 22, which is coming up next week, so be advised that that is on the agenda too, coming up for our next budget workshop. One other thing, I would like to lay you about the roof situation at the three schools. We know that the county commission is, will be looking at, March 2nd, so it'll be before our next meeting, they will be looking at a $2.1 million bond issued that does not require tax increase, their recommendation, TPO roofs. You're going to be looking at, and I think the board already talked about that at our budget workshop, that we need to look at that, and that's the amount of money we're going to get. It's up to us, up to you as the earbuds, this body, to decide what you're going to do with that $2.1 million. And so we'll have this board to decide that, once we receive those funds, or those funds are approved, for use of school roofs here in Canton County. So I would strongly suggest looking at that, and on the 22nd, we'll look at that as part of the budget review process. But that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, and also your internal school funds, those that were not at the workshop, you have Mr. John Vinny Young, the Certified Political County Auditor, you can see a copy of that, Internal School Funds Independent Auditor's Report, for the year ended June 30, 2018, is in your packets for your review. I tried to be short, sweet.
I believe that may be your shorts for you, Mr. Curtis.
Shorts.
But that is... But definitely still cover everything in there, so with that, we will not take up any extra time you may have left. The comments I have would be, TSBA, Daleon Hill is coming up very soon, so if you would like to attend that, and you haven't already, please get with Douglas and Mr. Curtis to confirm your reservations there. And again, please take the time to review these policies, if anything you would like on those to be looked at in more detail, please get that placed on the agenda, we'll be happy to do so. This one, just a quick reminder, Section 5 does have several, so Part 1 is this month, you will see next month, Part 2. you will see next month, Part 2. So just keep that in mind as well. I do not believe that anything else. So with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made, does not require a second. So thank you all for coming out. Our next regular workshop will be on Tuesday, March 12th, at Central Office. Our next regular board meeting will be Thursday, March 14th, here at the Woodbury Elementary Cafeteria. Before that, we do have a budget workshop, as Mr. Curtis mentioned, on February 22nd at 6:30 at Central Office. So I believe we will be hearing from two of our principals.
Westside at Woodland.
Westside at Woodland.
And the supervisors, we're still.
Still working on that, and then we'll have a few minutes for roofs. Thank you again, happy Valentine's Day to all of you, have a safe trip home.